Hello everyone and welcome to all our Dhamma friends from around the world. Thank you for joining us for the Sutta study series conducted by Bante Sumita. Bante is from Dhamma USA, which I'm sure some of you know is located in the Los Angeles area of California. Bante is going to continue the series today and continue with Anangana Sutta, which is from the Majjhmanikaya. The English translation of the title is Unblemished and in this Sutta, the Buddha uses the simile of a tarnished metal bowl to illustrate the blemishes of our mind and conduct. The Sutta classes are held every Friday at 6:00 PM and this is specific time in the US. So check the time in your own home country. And of course, this would be Saturday morning in Asia. Related to the Sutta study is a course on studying Pali 101. And Bante will be kicking off the 2021 curriculum tomorrow, Saturday, January 23rd. Again, this is California time. Level two classes will start at 3:30 PM and level one will start at 5:30 PM. The classes run for between an hour, an hour and a half. Please do try to join us for both because from a study of Pali, the more we understand the language, the more it brings the Suttas to life and it therefore enhances and enriches our understanding and practice of the Dhamma. Just one more point that I'd like to make. I do encourage you to ask questions. This setting is all yours. Bante is the best person to ask questions and this is the best environment for you to do it. So join us every Saturday and with that I'll turn it over to Bante.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Monica. So today we are going to discuss about the Majjhmanikaya Anangana Sutta as you mentioned. I would like to start with salutation to the Buddha. Let's get started with the salutation to the Buddha. Namutass Bhagavatoh Arhatoh Sammasambuddhas. Namutass Bhagavatoh Arhatoh Sammasambuddhas. Honor to him, the blessed one, the worthy one, the fully enlightened one. My utmost respect to the perfectly enlightened Sammasambuddha, the noble doctrine of the Buddha and the noble Mahasangha, the disciples of the Buddha. Hello everyone. Thank you for joining us today with our Majjhmanikaya Sutta study session. So far, we have discussed four sutras. I think we can complete the Anangana Sutta today. Anangana means unblemished, right? So so far we have almost completed the Sutta. Do you have any questions to ask first or I can go ahead right away? Just let me know first. Alright, so that I would like to go to the let me start with the slideshow. Okay. Right. So we stopped here last time. And according to this Sutta, it's very interesting. I think it will also be very useful to all of us. Sometimes the Sutta looks like the Sutta talks directly to the monks, but I think it should definitely be applied to everyone else. So I really want you all to apply this beautiful Sutta to all of you in your day-to-day lives. This is a constant reminder and a really good practitioner only, a one who is really mindful about your practice can see that there is something like that and you can identify, you can recognize your own loopholes, your own weaknesses, your own ups and downs. And then you can apply in different circumstances, different situations. Okay, so although it is for monks directly, but I'm 100% sure that all the lay people also can pretty much apply this beautiful Sutta and this Dhamma practice in your day-to-day life. Okay, so according to the Sutta, yasakasajavso bhikkunohime papaka akusala ichchavachara pahinadhisanticheva suyantichak. Kincapiso hothi gamantavihari nemantniko gahapatichivaradharo athakonang sabrahmachari sakkarunti garunkarunti manentipujenti. Suppose these spears of bad, unskillful vicious are seen and heard to be given up by a mendicant. So papaka akusala Dhamma means those unwholesome, unwholesome roots. Ichchavachara pahinadhisantich. So those unwholesome vicious, ichchavachara. Pahinadhisantich means can be seen, given up by the mendicant. Suyantich means to be heard and thisantich means to be seen. So suppose there are spears of bad, unskillful vicious are seen and heard to be given up by a mendicant. Now we just assume some of them have done, have given up these things. Kincapiso hothi gamantavihari nemantniko gahapatichivaradharo. And so even though they dwell in the neighborhood of a village, gamantavihari, gamantavihari means they live by the end of the village or by the, by close proximity to a village. Because of their own arms rounds, they have to stay with the, with the arms. So they, they normally live closer to the, the village. Gamantavihari, they are called gamantavihari. Nemantniko, nemantniko means they are also accept. They also accept the invitation to a meal. Nimantanam means to accept. You invite the monks. So nemantnikam means the one who is invited. So the monks can be invited according to the, the chanting that you use to pay salute, pay homage to the Sangha. We say ahunayoyo, paunayoyo, dakkinayoyo, anjali karaniyo. So they can be invited to your home, the Mahasangha members. They are qualified, spiritually qualified because there are actually some, some qualities, some virtues, noble virtues of those Mahasangha members. So they can be invited to your home for meal, mildhan. So nemantnikam means that. Gahapatichivaradharo, gahapatichivaradharo means they wear robes offered by the householders. Gahapatich means the householder. Chivardharat means the one who wears the robe. And athakonang sabrahmachari sakkarunti garunkarunti manentipujenti. So they are spiritual companions, sabrahmachari. Brahmachari is a spiritual lifestyle one is living with. And for example, the monks and nuns are supposed to be practicing celibacy. So sabrahmachari, they practice their own holy lifestyle and sabrahmachari. So these spiritual people, they, they are spiritual companions. Sakkarunti means honor them. Garunkarunti means to reverence them, respect them. And manentipujenti, they venerate. Thangisahetu, why is that? I, I would like you to, our Pali students, to remember this word. Thangisahetu, thangisahetu means why is that? Why is that? Tehitasayasmato papaka akusala ichchavachara pahinadhisanticheva suyantich. Okay, so what happens here? Tehitasayasmato papaka akusala ichchavachara pahinadhisanticheva. It is because ayasmato, the, of the friend, ayasmato and papaka akusala, those unskillful vicious, ichchavachara vicious. Ichchati means to vicious or likes. Pahinadhisanticheva suyantich. Because they, they see these monks as people who have given up those, those unwholesome vicious. And we, we talked about those unwholesome vicious already. And sayyathapi also khansapati aabata apanava kammakarakula kammarakulava parisuddha pariyodatha. Tamenang saamika salinang salinang odanang vichit. Vichitakalakang anesaneekasupang anekabyanjanang rachaitva anyissa khansapatiya patikujitva antarapanang patipadjayum. Now, the same khansapati, khansapati means the bronze dish that we were discussing about before. Aabata apana from the shop, somebody, this is the, the simile that is constantly used here. Suppose a bronze dish was brought from a shop. Aabata apana, I actually wish to see if it is ahabata instead of aabata. Let me see if we have the same thing from yeah, aabata, it should be ahabata according to, I will double check that word. Right, looks like ahabata. Apanava kammarakulava parisuddha pariyodatha. So that shop, somebody brings a bronze dish and it is clean and bright. Tamenang saamika salinang odanang vichitakalakang anekasupang anekabyanjanang rachaitva. So then the owners were to prepare it with boiled fine rice. So saamika means the owner, salinang odanang, so boiled rice, odanang means the rice. Vichitakalakang anekasupang, so he also prepares different kinds of dishes, many soups and sauces. Vichitakalakang anekasupang anekabyanjanang, all different kinds of curries or sauces. And rachaitva anyissa khansapatiya. So he has prepared it and then with another one, cover it with the bronze lid. Patikujitva means having covered. Antarapanang patipadjayum, antarapanang patipadjayum. That means and carried it through the marketplace. That means, antarapanang means through the marketplace. Apana means again, the shopping center or shopping mall. So somebody covers the food with the, with another lid and with the bronze dish, you have the food inside soups and sauces and then you cover it and then take it through the marketplace. Thang enang janodhissva evangvadeya. When people see this, people say like this. Ambho, ambho means dear friends. King evang idang hariyati, what is this that you are carrying? Janja janjang vyati, like a precious treasure, something very, some, looks like something very precious. What is that you are carrying? Thang enang uttahitva apa puritva olokayya. So they open up the lid for the people to look inside. Uttahitva means having raised or having lift the lid. Apa puritva olokayya, so people can look inside, olokayya is to look. And thangisahetu tehitasayasmato papaka akusala ichchavachara pahinadhisanticheva. Okay, alright, I think, yeah, I missed it. Yeah, apa puritva olokayya. Tassah saha dasanena manapatacha santahaya appati kulyatacha santahaya ajeguchatacha santahaya. And as soon as they saw it, they were filled with liking, attraction and relish. So what really happens because the food very delicious and yummy and the, the mouth-watering nature of the food. Normally people like the good smell of the food and also the good presentation of the food and all this food stuff, when they see it inside, they feel it attracted towards that. So santahaya ajeguchata, so this is, ajegucha means the opposite of attraction. It's like disgusting, ajegucha means, ajegucha means the opposite. And santahaya relishing and liking, all the food is very attractive. Suhitanampi bhuttukammyata assa pageva jiguchita jiguchitanang. So now suhitanampi bhuttukammyata, bhunjati is to eat, right? I think our Pali students know that word already. Those who had eaten, wanted to eat it. So bhuttukammyata means they want to eat, they, they like to eat. So when you are already wanting to eat something, so you still feel very, you already have eaten, but you still want to eat it. Suhitanampi means you are, you have already eaten it, but still you want to eat it. So let alone those people who are hungry. So what about the people who have not eaten? When they see that yummy food and they're good with the good smell of it and that wonderful presentation of the food and they definitely want to eat more. Evamevako aavso yasakasajavso bhikkunohime papaka akusala ichchavachara pahinadhisanticheva suyantich. Now in the same way, when these spears of bad, unskillful vicious are seen and heard to be given up by a mendicant and they are spiritual companions will of course honor them, respect them, reverence them and venerate them. So just like that, just like when those wonderful kalyanamitha friends, those wonderful spiritual companions, when they see those monks who have given up those vicious or those unwholesome vicious, they will definitely honor, respect, reverence and venerate such monks. Just like a bronze dish which, which consists of a good yummy food. So everyone will like it. And similarly, those spiritual companions and also the other people will definitely like such people, such monks. Thangisahetu, now the reason again, why is that? So the same thing is given here. Tehitasayasmata papuka akusala ichchavachara pahinadhisanticheva. Because they have seen those unskillful vicious have been given up. Evangvute ayasamohamohamogallanu ayasmantangsariputtang nav etadavacha. Evangvute, when he said this, evang means thus, okay? When he said thus, who said thus? Venerable Sariputta said this, right? Ayasamohamogallanu, venerable Mahamogallanu, his friend said ayasmantangsariputtang etang avacha, etang avacha, said to him, said this. Upama among aavso Sariputta patibhati, Reverend Sariputta, my good friend, venerable friend. A simile springs to mind, can, upama, patibhati, upama means a simile. Patibhatu thang aavso mogallanu. Now venerable Sar, venerable Mogallanu, suddenly he, his mind is popped up with a beautiful simile. And then venerable Sariputta says, please go ahead and explain to us. Evangidahang aavso samayang rajagaheviharami giribaje. Now at one time, ekang, ekang ida, ahang aavso samayang. So ekang ida, ida means here, ekang samayang means one time, ahang ai. Aavso friend rajagaheviharami lives, live in Rajagaha. Giribaje, giribaje means, giri is mountain, so mountainous area. We have vouches, freak and all in Rajgir already. So I was staying right there, right here in Rajgir. That is also called Rajgir, Rajagaha, the mountain keep. Athakho ahang aavso, then friend, puubvanhasamayang niwasetwa. Puubvanhasamay means morning session, okay? Niwasetwa means I roped up in the morning. Patte chivara amadaya, patte chivaranadaaya, patteancha chivaranacha adaya. Patte means the bowl, chivara means the robe, adaya means having taken. Having taken the, the bowl and the robe, rajagahang pindaya pavising. I went to, I entered the Rajagaha city for arms round. Tena koopanasamayena samithi yana karu, yana karaputto ratassa naming tachchati. Tena koopanasamayena means by that time, that time or then. Samithi. Now at that time, samithi, the cart rider. Okay, yana karaputto means someone who makes carts, like a mechanic. He was ratassa naming tachchati, he was planning the rim of a chariot wheel. Okay, so he was working on his, his chariot wheel. Lot of those days, they were, they were having lot of bullock carts. So something happened and so he was working with that. Thang enang pinduputto, panduputto ajivako purana yana karaputto. So purana yana karaputto pachupattito hothi. The ajivaka ascetic panduputto, so he is, he is an ajivaka, another kind of ascetic. Those days Brahmins and so many other different kinds of spiritual practitioners were there in the, in the wilderness. So there, there were also different kinds of practitioners. So this ajivaka, ascetical panduputto, who used to be a cart rider and was standing by and this thought came to his mind. Evang chetaso parivitako, chetaso parivitako means a mind, a thought came to him. Okay, udapadi appeared, so aho vata ayangsamithi yana karaputto imissanemia imancha wangkang imancha jimhang imancha dosang tachchaya. I hope samithi, the cart rider, plans out the crooks, bends and floors in this rim. Then the rim will be rid of crooks, bends and floors and consists purely of the essential core. So I hope, again, another wish that my, my, my rim, my tire or whatever, you know, the, the cartwheel will be good and there will be no, no crooks, no bends, no floors. Then I can easily actually ride my cart anywhere because those days they didn't have the kind of infrastructure that we have today, like the freeways and all. People can really drive very fast. Those days it was like really kind of a roller coaster rider for them. So it was very hard. So it's very important that they need, they have those rims and their wheels, cartwheels should be very strong and then they can actually go a long way with their businesses. Yata yata ko aavso panduputtasa ajivakasa purana yana karaputtasa chetaso parivitako hothi. Tattha tattha samithi yana karaputto tassanemia thancha wangkang thancha jimhang thancha dosang tachchati. Now samithi planned out the floors in the rim, rim just as panduputto thought. So panduputto wanted this thing and he, that guy samithi, he, he planned it out and it was nicely done. Athakho aavso panduputto ajivako puran, purana yana karaputto attamano attamana vaachang nichcharesi hadaya hadayang manye anjaya tachchati. Then the panduputto expresses gladness, he was very happy because of the, the good work that the technician had done, he was very happy. Panduputto expresses happiness. See attamano, attamana vaachang nichcharesi. Attamano means when somebody is happy. Attamana vaachang means he expresses that. Hadaya hadayang manye anjaya tachchati. He plans like he knows my heart with his heart. So the owner of the cart had the thought that he really wanted that So, the owner of the cart had the thought that he really wanted that cartwheel to be in perfect shape. And this technician, he did exactly what his heart was thinking. That was really to his surprise. He was very pleased with the wonderful work this guy did. Ewamewako ausho yete pugala assadhha jivikatha nasadhha agarasma anagarayang pabjittha. Sattha mayavi no ketabhinno, udhatha annala chapala mukhara, vikinnavaacha indriyesu aguttadvara, bhoganebhoganee amattanyuno. Jagaryang ananuyutta samanye anapekvantho sikhayan na tibbagaarava bahulika saathalika okkamanee bubbangama. Paviveke nikhitadura khusita hina veeria mutthasati asampajanya, asampajana. Asamahita vibhanthachitta duppanya elamuga teesang ayasma sariputto imina dhamma pariyayena hadaya hadayang manye anyaya tachchati. This is really beautiful simili that venerable mahamogallana was explaining. Just as the technician knew exactly what the owner of the cart wanted him to do and he mended his cart and he was, he was really happy. In the same way, there are those faithless people, okay? Assadhha means, sadha means faith, right? Also, assadhha means, assadhha pugala means faithless people. Jivikatha, jivikatha nasadhha agarasma anagarayang pabjittha, who went forth from the lay life. Okay, jivikatha means from the lay life and sadha. So, he has gone from agarasma, from homelessness. Agara means homelessness and so from lay life, okay? Agara means from home, anagaria means homelessness, yes. Agara means home, so anagaria means homelessness. So, the, the, the one who has already home, he has given it up and then becomes homeless and not out of faith. But he has also sadha, you know, he, he went out of faith. Nasadhha means not out of faith, but to learn, but to earn a livelihood. So, there are people who have gone like that and then they actually want to make life out of it. So, jivikatha nasadhha agarasma anagaria pabjittha means there were some people who actually became homeless. Became homeless means they entered the order. They became ascetic, so they became monks, so they became whatever, you know, those spiritual practitioners. Why? Because they wanted to make a life out of it. So, they were, they didn't have sadha. It was a different motive when they entered the order. Sattha mayavi no ketabhinno, so sattha means they are cunning, devious. Mayavi no means they, they are deceitful, ketabhinno means they are sneaky. They are very, they have different ulterior motives. Udhatha and also restless, udhachakukucha means restlessness, right? And so udhatha means restless. Unnala means insolent, that means they are also lazy. Chapala, they are also not really honest, they are very fickle minded. And mukhara means they always keep gossiping, keep talking. Mukhara means to, you know, incessantly keeps talking. So, vikinnavaacha, another, another something to do with the word. Loose tongue means you wag your tongue and you keep talking. Indriyesu aguttadvara means you don't have the restraint in your faculties. Like eye, ear, nose, body and the mind, so no restraint, no, no culture in, in these things. So, they are indriyesu aguttadvara. And bhoganebhoganen, they also don't know how much to eat, no moderation in eating, they eat a lot. Bhoganebhoganen, then jagaryang ananuyutta. So, jagaryang means, like those practitioners, they used to stay awake even in the night, keep, while keeping their practice. But these people are not like that because their motive is different. So, jagaryang ananuyutta means those people didn't want to stay awake and practice. Samanye anapekvantho. Samanye means the life of holy, holy practice, so ascetic life. So, samanye anapekvantho means they did not have any hope, they are not dedicated to the, the holy life. They, they don't care about their holy practice. Sikhayana tibbagaarava, so sikhayana means the, the, the training rules. So, they did not have any respect, any tibbagaaro means keen respect about the training. And then paviveke nikhitadura. So, you know, the viveka means like they, those monks and all those practitioners, those ascetics, they were, they like to be in very leisurely and peaceful state of mind. So, paviveka means restful mind, nikhitadura, they are not like this. Khusita hina veeria, they are also lazy, hina veeria means don't make any effort. And then mutthasati asampajana and lacking energy. And also mutthasati means again about the, the sati, lack of sati, lack of mindfulness. And asampajana and vibhanthachitta duppanya and also witless and stupid. Vibhanthachitta means witless, they, and also duppanya means stupid. Elamuga, elamuga is stupid. So, straying minds is vibhanthachitta, the mind really is like a monkey mind, wandering all the time. They can focus, they can sit and meditate, it's always difficult for them. And duppanya means no panya, no wisdom and elamuga means also stupid. So, teesang ayasma sariputto imina dhamma pariyayena hadaya hadayang manye anyaya tachchati. So, to venerable Sariputta, planes their folds with this exposition of the teachings as if he knows my heart with his heart, just like that. So, venerable Sariputta is like the technician, you know? And he is so skillful and he is so smart, he could mend the mind of those wandering, those bad practitioners, they can still fix such people as well. Venerable Sariputta has been very beautifully venerated and his powerful teaching is appreciated by venerable mahamogallana here. Very beautiful way, I think the simili is really nice one. Ye panate kulaputta sadha agarasmanagariyam pabjittha asathama mayavi, now it is the other, other side. But there are those gentlemen who went forth from the lay life to homelessness out of faith. Now, they are going with sadha, the other one was going nasadhha, without sadha. They also go from their house, they renounce and they become homeless out of faith. They are not devious, asathama mayavi and they are not deceitful, they are not sneaky, they are not restless, they are insolent, not insolent. They are not fickle minded and they are really very firm and they don't gossip. They, they also keep their tongue very tight. And when it comes to the, the practice, they keep noble silence. And they guard their sense dose and eat in moderation, they don't eat a lot, they eat in moderation. And they are dedicated to wakefulness, means they also study, I mean, they practice a lot. Sati, they are, samahita means they, they are very good in meditation. They are good in concentration, they are good in focusing, they care about the ascetic life. And keenly ascetic, respect the training and they are not indulgent or slack. Nor are they leaders in backsliding, they are not also like that. They also, they also like to be in seclusion. So, I think the viveka here also means seclusion. The monks have a very wonderful practice of to be alone. To be alone in the sense you need that self space for yourself so that you can practice. Many of us, like in the, the normal, regular society, what people do is they keep moving, mixing with the other people and thereby they don't have time for themselves. Their self-care is missing in that. So, the monks here, now we can see their primary motive is to be secluded because they can practice, it's very important, you have time for yourself. They are in this practice, that doesn't mean they are like selfish, but that's very important when you keep practicing like that. That will help you to get deep into the profound practice. They are energetic and determined, they are mindful with situational awareness. And so, this is sati, ekagachitta, like upathita sati. Situational, they are mindful with situational awareness, immersion. And unified minds means samahita chitta, ekagata, unified minds, wise and not stupid. Here in this exposition of the teaching from the venerable Sariputta, they drink it up to, and they drink it up and devour it as it were. And in speech and thought, they say, it's good sirs that he draws his spiritual companions away from the unskillful and establishes them in the skillful. So, a very powerful practitioner, a powerful good teacher can fix all those weak people, all those people who are full of blemishes. They can make them unblemish, they can make them anangan. That's, that is the, the, the very idea of this paragraph. Seyethapi ausho ittiva puriso adharo yua mandanaka jatiko sisanghato. Sisang, sisanghato uppala, uppalamalangva vassika, vassikamalangva, attimuttakamalangva labhitva ubohi hathhehi patiggahetva uttamange sirasang, sirasming patitthamaya. Now, seyethapi means just, just as, or suppose. Ausho ittiva puriso va, itti means woman, va means o, puriso means man, va means o, dharo means young, yua means youthful, dharo means actually a little, little child. Yua means more young person. And mandanaka, mandanaka jatiko means fond of adornments. Like mandanam means you want to decorate your, your body, you like, you like to do lot of makeups and all that stuff, mandanaka jatiko. Sisanghato, sisanghato means had bathed their head. Sisa means, sisanghato, I think, sisanghato. So, sisa is the head, so had their, had bathed their head. And uppalamalangva, uppalamalang, after getting a garland of lotuses. Uppala means lotus, malam means garland. So, vassikamalang means another kind of garland, that is made, made of jasmine. And then attimuttakamalang, another kind of, another kind of garland made of liana flowers. And Labhitva ubohi hathhehi patiggahetva, with both hands, having taken them with both hands. Asathha, sorry. Patiggahetva uttamange sirasming patitthapaya. So, they keep it on their head, on the crown. Utthama, utthama angam means the top of the head, okay, crown of the head. Sirasming patitthapaya, so they keep it on there, they would take them in both hands and place them on the crown of the head. And ewamewako ausho yete kulaputta sadha agarasma. Now, when somebody has taken a shower and having taken that adorn, I mean, those garlands, keep it on their head, just like that. And the same way, those gentlemen who went forth from lay life to homelessness out of faith. So, they, again, they know how powerful it is, how important it is and they also go out of their home with sadha. And then they, they practice and they really take good care of their spiritual practice. So, okkamante nikhitadura paviveke bubbangama. So, it, it is the same thing like the other one. Te ayasmatos sariputtang imang dhamma pariyayang sutwa bhivanti manye. So, they have listened to the, the wonderful dhama of venerable Sariputta sutwa bhivanti manye, they drink it. And gasanti manye, like in the previous, this one, we, we heard it already, like gasanti manye. So, they also drink it and devour it and vachasacheva manasacha. So, also in the speech and also in the thought. So, they completely practice and purify themselves with that. And sadhu atabho tabrahmachari akusala vutthapetva kusale patitthapeti. It is good sirs that he draws his spiritual companions away from the unskillful and establishes them in the skillful. And so, venerable Sariputta's power of skill, skillful method is, I think his pedagogy in teaching the, the dhama, that is why the Buddha said he is a very wonderful monk. Out of all the Mahasanga members in the, the order, Buddhist order, venerable Sariputta is foremost among the wise monks and he would be able to And he would be able to restrain or establish all those unskillful people in the Buddha's asana and convert them into wonderful, skillful people. Itthihatte ubho mahanaga anyas subhasitang samanu mo dinsutti. And so, these two spiritual giants agreed with each other's fine words. They also, you know, they were not like, they didn't have any ego like that. They were actually appreciating each other, venerable Sariputta, venerable Mukhalana. They were all very powerful practitioners of their own terms. And they keep appreciating each other, mutually respectful to each other. And with that, ananganasutta, the fifth sutta of the Madhyamani Kaya is concluded. Okay? Now, it is time over to you, Vani Ga.
Thank you, Bante Sadhu. Now, does anyone have any questions? If you'd like to use the chat function, that's fine as well.
Okay, so you can let me know if there is any chat.
Yes, would you? Anyone at all? Does it all very clear?
Okay. I think this sutta is a really powerful one. I really like those very little minor details, you know? Especially the second week, last week, when we were discussing about those different kinds of wishes that we have, like very simple things. It looks very simple, but it's not so simple. The Buddha said, you know, you have to be very careful about those small, small mistakes. Kuddhanukuttaka, or if you really care about those simple things that can make you really a powerful person. Sometimes you don't even know those simple things, how those things are established in yourself. And, you know, we also don't have venerable Sariputta like powerful teacher. And so, we have to be really careful about our own practice. And I wish you also go through this sutta, learn more and practice more and so that you can get some much more help for your own practice. Okay?
But, Bante, I actually have one quick question. Yeah, those, those situations that the Buddha brought up among the monks, like, you know, not being admonished in public or I would like to go first, those sort of situations. Would you say it is the ego and conceit that plays a primary role, the primary motivation?
Like, you know, there are some people who do some mistakes, you know? Like, we have, the Buddha, we have a term for the Buddha or the enlightened one called araha, right? Araha means not even in the secret, they do any mistake. So, lots and lots of people in the world, they, maybe they, in public they are good, but they still have their own, that is why we are in this karma world, right? That is why we are in this sansara. So, those people actually who are enlightened would not do those things even in secret. But they, this case is different. And so, because of our own ego, because we don't, our own sakhaaditya, right? We really care for it. We don't want to hurt our ego and our sakhaaditya and we always try to appreciate. We want others to appreciate us, respect us, honor us, good name and fame all the time. And when we do mistakes, we still try to find excuses to minimize the damage. That's why we want to minimize the damage. Having, having seen yourself, we want to minimize the damage. That's really the case here. Yeah.
Thank you, Bante. There is one question from the chat group from Pune. How do we get rid of blemishes by meditation?
I think when you get, when you practice meditation, it will come to your own, you know? You will recognize yourself, like those things will come to you and you recognize it. And then they will not establish in you. This is the best thing I, I want to emphasize. Like when you practice, you also are aware of it, you are mindful of it. Okay, like we say, if you have a thought, like, let's say, like, I got anger, I got jealousy, I got hatred, you know, whatever, good and bad things can come to you. And many of the times, we don't know. Those things come to us, we don't even know, we don't bother to think of it. And now, when you meditate, you can think of it and you can see that. And at the end of it, it comes to the practice. When you keep doing it, you will recognize yourself. Oh, I have this problem. I keep gossiping or I keep getting angry. Or you will recognize because you look into yourself, right? That's why you look into yourself. When you look into yourself, you, you will learn. And when you practice it, actually, that is also why we recognize our own mistakes. And when you recognize your, your own mistakes, there is a chance for you to get rid of it. There is a chance. Otherwise, you don't even know. They just establish in yourself, right?
Yes, I think, I think we're too impatient.
Yes.
Your practice takes.
Yeah, practice, you know, I must say, every day you practice even for 10 minutes, 5 minutes, you keep practicing it and eventually it should become a part of your habit, your system. Your system will recognize, oh, I need to meditate. 10 minutes, 15 minutes, you keep doing it. And those 10, 15 minutes a day will be the savior of your life. You keep doing it, make it a habit and that will be your good karma too. That will also, you know, rectify lots of mistakes in you and you'll be able to recognize those loopholes, like the wheel, you know, the cartwheel. Everything will be, all those things will be fixed when you are mindful about that.
Dulani, you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Okay, okay, I think we have chanting pretty soon at 7 o'clock. Thank you for joining us today and hopefully we will start with the other sutta next time. And thank you again, everyone, for joining us. We will continue to study the suttas and let's practice, learn something and practice, okay? That is the most important thing. And also learn some Pali, learn some Dhamma, learn some Pali. And when you also listen to Dhamma, it will help you become a better person, okay? One, as I think according to the Pune's question, one thing is you need to have sadhamma savana, listen to the Dhamma talks. And also you need sapurisa, savana, like you need some good friends, kalyanamitta friends. And when you keep doing it, you listen to the Dhamma, you have some good associations. And also you, you practice yourself, you make some effort, then there is a chance for you to get rid of those impurities, those blemishes. Hopefully, all of us will be able to become perfectly enlightened. Okay, with that, we conclude today. Thank you for joining us. See you again next week at the same time.
Thank you, Bante.